I'll call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. If you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
My boy, allegiance is with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I just want to thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask for your protection over our elected officials, employees, and as citizens. Help us all to better understand each other and give all of us wisdom to make sound decisions. Amen.
Mike, if you'll take the phone, please.
Councilman Levin.
Here.
Councilman Schlag.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Lally.
Here.
And Mayor MacLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve or correct the agenda for September 14th?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag, seconded by Mr. Valerius. Are there any changes, comments? Well, I thought I had it on silent, but apparently I should. All right, we had a motion by Councilman Schlag, seconded by Councilman Valerius. Any comments or questions on the agenda tonight? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 24th.
I make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Lally.
Second, Valerius.
Seconded by Councilman Valerius. Any corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we move on to presentations. Our first one is the swearing-in of a new hire, Police Officer Ryan Allen. Some of us may have met him at Cop on the Block.
Yes, good evening, I'm here in council. This is one of those good days, I wish we can start every council meeting off with swearing-in an officer. We're very lucky to have him. Ryan's going to come up. Ryan Allen is a 14-year veteran from the E-course Police Department. He comes with us with a lot of experience. He was a corporal, which means he's filled in in leadership roles, is a field training officer, fireman one and two, but we won't say that too loud. Breathalyzer, laser, taser certified, all those things. So he's, not only he saves us a lot of money, he brings in a lot of experience, so we're really happy to have him. So, Mr. Mizzi, if you're ready. He's here with his wife, Melissa, and her, his parents.
Wonderful.
Okay, I'm going to read your oath to you, and I just ask, at the end, you say, "I swear, I do," or "I affirm," whichever you feel most comfortable with. And that you raise your right hand. Do you, Ryan Allen, do soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of full-time police officer to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to let you take some additional photos, but it always occurs that when we have these events, everyone has left, and the council members always rue the fact that they never get a chance to say a welcoming comment.
For sure.
And so that, I'm glad I didn't have this turned off, because someone reminded me, hey, it might be a good idea not to make it all of that. So I will invite the council to make any comments they would care to about our new police officer at this time.
Well, thank you for coming to Allen Park, and I always say, stay positive, and I hope everything goes well in the future, and just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say, to echo Councilman Levin's statement, thank you for coming to Allen Park. I'm sure you're the sort of our community proud, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I know a lot of police departments and cities are hiring. I'm glad you chose Allen Park.
Thank you.
Seriously, your experience and everything else is going to be awesome for the department, and I appreciate your family all showing up to see you getting sworn in today, and just pray for you, and I'm sure you'll do an awesome job.
Thank you.
And I know the citizens are appreciative. Thank you.
So far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for choosing Allen Park Police Department. You have a good group of young men there. They do a good job, and I'm sure you'd be a good asset to them, the things that you know, you could teach them. Thank you for coming in, in Allen Park.
Thanks.
So, thank you. I'm at the end of the line here. But I got, I teach in the community, I've got a number of nieces and nephews here, and I know that every day, our police officers go out and they put their lives on the line to keep our community safe, and Officer Allen, I really, really appreciate you joining that amazing group of people. And I, I want to extend a special thank you to Melissa. I know that it is, thank you so much for, I know that you might have some sleepless nights sometimes, and it's, it's not an easy life to be the, the wife of a police officer, but thank you so much for letting, letting us have your husband and making us a better community, so we very much appreciate it.
And I'll get to the last.
Still got the mayor.
The mayor.
So, but thank you. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for choosing us over a lot of other places you could have gone. So, thank you very much, and thank you for the family to come, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And Officer, we've spoken a couple of times already, and I've welcomed you, but I will reinforce everything that was said here, and it's very nice to see your family here, and we hope that you are with us for the long haul.
He did, he did say he was amazed at the backing of the community at our Cop on the Block, and, you know, a little quick story, I heard a lot about him recently on a loud house party where everybody ran and behind the wall and all that, and he had used the body cameras, took it off, put it over the wall, so they got you on film, and, and someone said, "Ryan, is that you?" So they opened the door. He, he built up a, a good reputation, they're very well respected, and the true community policing officer in a very diverse community really respect him, so we're really lucky to get him, so thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, buddy. He doesn't play softball. I don't know if we're going to get an in-the-park homerun like Mr. Frizz, but we're glad to have him either way.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You as well.
All right, our next presentation is by Deputy Fire Chief O'Reilly. He's going to update us on the Fire Cadet Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I was asked to give an update about the cadet program, just to do a little recap, so everyone at home understands what we're talking about. The cadet program was started in 2020 through the William D. Ford Career Technical Center in Westland. That's part of the Wayne Westland School District. So this is a vocational school. They have many, many programs for high school students. One of the programs they started back in 2020 was the Fire Cadet Program. That program accepts any student 16 to 18 years old from Wayne County, and they can go there. In the fire program itself, the Fire Cadet Program itself, they can receive a math credit and an English credit towards their high school degree. So these students go there, they spend their days there, they learn many things about firefighting, they, in EMT classes, they have to do papers, do math. The new part of this is that through the work of the directors, who are Kerry Thompson and Josh Bunsey, both firefighters during the day, and then they go there and teach on their days off, they are now going to be able to receive 30 credits at Wayne County Community College. So they will leave high school with 30 credits, half of an associate's degree, moving forward, if they apply for that. Now, not every one of these students will go on and continue into the fire service, but it does make them good citizens. They understand what, what firefighters have to go through, they've taken it in, they've done the hands-on, physical side of it, and that makes them leaders in the community that they can branch out into other areas. The ones that continue into the service, they've got a head start, and, you know, we need that, we need those people, because right now, just like the police, fire service potential candidates are down. So we need everyone that we can to go into these services and do the work that we do. Currently, they have approximately 16 students this year. That number may go up as things move around, but as of right now, it's 16. And currently, the school is funded by the Wayne and Westland School District, so there is no cost to the city of Allen Park for being a sponsor. Back in 2020, they needed sponsorship to get the program going, and through the Allen Park Fire Department, through the Mayor and Council, we gave them that support. Any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
All right. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I get to read a proclamation. It's regarding the National Rail Safety Week. Whereas 1,889 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 678 personal injuries and were responsible for 201 fatalities in the United States during 2020. And whereas 1,088 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 532 pedestrians being killed and another 556 injured while trespassing on a railroad property right of way during 2020. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. Therefore, I, Gail B. MacLeod, Mayor, do hereby attest my full support, proclaiming September 20th to 26th, 2021, National Rail Safety Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 14th day of September 2021. And now we move on to the city administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to say thank you to Deputy Chief O'Reilly for giving an update. I think the aspect of adding those college credits to that program and making it a dual program is really going to be a nice asset to present to the students as a, an encouragement to go into that, that field as well, so we do appreciate the information and the update. And that was approved by council. I think we did that during the Zoom, when the Kerry was on the call with the chief and deputy chief at that time, so. Just a couple of quick updates here, the Wayne County Road Bridge Project down on Moran is still going on. I haven't had any updates on that, but I think we're still on course for a mid-November reopening. We did get some benefit that came out of that project, working with the contractor. We did not have to do the water main. Tom was able to work with the contractor, and come to find out, it really wasn't our water main that was in, potentially in the way, it was actually a GLWA 72-inch pipeline. So they, they removed, they moved the bridge around, to work around that 72-inch. Apparently, it's easier to move the bridge than it is to move a 72-inch line, so we were just benefited of that aspect as well, so was able to save some money from the water fund and not have to do that project. For the Park Avenue, for the street improvement mill, they were laying sod this morning, and they should be wrapped up here in the next couple of days. I didn't get a chance to get out back this afternoon to see, but it, it did look really nice. I think when we do those, and those road projects, it really just finishes off and have a nice appearance afterwards, especially, you know, it is an inconvenience to the residents, but, you know, they do get a new road, but there's a lot of dust and dirt that comes with it, so. As we talk about that one, Hand Four is still underway. Hand Four actually had a water main that was a, a part of that project. That water main portion of the project is now complete, and they're on the, the new line. The only issue with remaining on that is to pour the concrete back into Allen Road, and that should happen in the next couple of days. And then for Hand Four, they were pouring concrete this morning. They were about 100 feet off of Allen Road to the east, and then they were heading east to about 300 feet, just this side of, or east of, or west of Lawrence Avenue. So that is on the south side, so a good section of concrete poured there today, and making some headway in that neighborhood as well. They should be on task to finish sometime around mid to late October, and that, and their GV will be responsible for the restoration of the water main project. They were actually the contractor, the, and it was subbed out, so this will all work out well with the GV putting in the new sidewalks and approaches, fixing the lawns, and the, and the easement lawns as well, so that'll happen shortly thereafter as well. And I skipped around here a little bit, let me get back on task. Shenandoah Water Main Replacement, this is over by Rogers School. Unfortunately, timing was not, was not good, but when you're at the mercy of the contractors, that project started just a few days before school opened up. There was a little commotion over there with all the activity going on, but the heavy equipment is now out of, out of the way, because the line has been installed. I think they had to ask a, for the police, the police department to send over some personnel to kind of remind some people of how to properly park and properly work around construction zone and school zones in general. So I think that they issued a few notices to people, and I think that will usually solve a bit of a problem. For street section, the contractor for that is Savone Cement, and if you leave here this evening and look across the street between the, next to the Shell Station, he's over on Quan Avenue. They're working from Southfield Road North to Dashar. Southfield, Quan was closed from Southfield to Beatrice to allow for the, that to get all completed, and then limited access from Beatrice to Dashar, just so the, you know, crews are a little bit safer in that area. We had a water main break and a concrete replacement down in Rosedale that we had to close the roadway. The traffic was just flying by too close to the construction crews, so it was just safer for the, for the road to be shut down completely. It is an inconvenience, but the safety of the personnel is much more important than a little bit of inconvenience, you have to go up a couple of blocks and come back to a street or so. So Quan was poured, they did pour a large section yesterday as well for that. Some really good news came in between the last, we've been three meetings, three weeks since last meeting with, with council. In that meantime, I know you probably received an email on this, I just want to make sure we announce it for the public as well, but the Allen Park Historical Commission was awarded a HOPE grant. I'm not too sure what HOPE stood for, I didn't, I couldn't see the acronym, I should have looked it up, but it comes from the Michigan Humanities Group, and it's for $5,000. The funds are to be used for display units for their museum outreach, and I just want to make sure we recognize Liz Hardick, a member of the Historical Commission, for her efforts. She was very instrumental in securing this grant for the commission, and she, she's done a wonderful job of, been a great asset to the commission. I believe she works for Ann Arbor Library. Ann Arbor Library? Ann Arbor Library, and so I think she works in this kind of a field, and so this was right up her alley to help us out, and we do appreciate that for the commission. Another good note, the Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund was selected as a winner of the, of a 2021 Community Service Award from M. Parks, which is the Michigan Parks and Recreation Association, and the APCCF was awarded, I was nominated by Director Hawkins for this award. I think it, I was trying to put down what kind of projects, and I didn't want to miss anything, and I think the APCCF and the recreation have been partners on numerous activities. I think it goes back to laying mulch at, at a couple parks, to equipment, to roof on the community center, and, and a little bit of everything in between as well, so well deserved for the APCCF to be recognized by the Parks Association for that. Earlier today, DPS Director Murray was a host for the DCC, the Downriver Community Conference, Department of Public Works, Public Services Work Group. He held, held the event there at the DPS facility and received many rave reviews of the facility. I think there's a lot of jealous directors and personnel. He did tell me there was a few people were told to stop taking pictures by their, by their superiors, because they were not going to get those items added to their facility or anything like that, so. It is nice to be able to be, be able to host an event like that and be recognized by the peers that the facility is of a top-notch caliber. And then yesterday, he provided a tour for a group of officials out of Grand Blanc. Now, I'm hoping maybe that there's a return of maybe some golf or something like that for that tour, but I'm not too sure, but I think Grand Blanc has a few golf courses up there, but they're also looking at a new facility. This is very similar to what we were doing before, getting the, the final plans together. We toured a lot of different places. You look and find out what's, what works, what doesn't work, and, and in some cases, you know, if items, you know, we, we were talking to, I'm meeting with Grand, with Farmington Hills, and their facility set up very similar to us, their big issue was make sure it's wide enough. The trucks are getting longer now. They, they actually use the slip-in beds with the salt plow, or the salt spreader at the rear end of the truck, which is a lot, you know, three to four feet longer. So when they were backing out, they were, had to be careful they didn't back into another piece of equipment, so they made the most of whatever they had, but they said, "If you're going to do it, make sure you do it." That's why we went a little bit wider. So these tours that these communities are taking are very beneficial. Hopefully, they can come up with a plan that works well for them, and we, hopefully, we can be a catalyst for, for those design plans as well. And talking about the facility, we, we mentioned it, the last time, I think, everybody looked like it was good for this date, so September 30th, Thursday, September 30th, we'll do an open house at the facility, open to the public from eight, from eight o'clock, from six, from four, four o'clock in the afternoon until 6:30 at night, and then we'll do the official ribbon cutting of the facility around 5:30. That should accommodate most of the staff that needs, or the council that is working, so you can get there, don't have to rush. If we do it at 5:45, we do it at six o'clock, that's all fine. As soon as we have everybody there, we'll go ahead and get that taken care of, but theme would be for about 5:30. And we'll just do some light refreshments and just have the public be able to come in. I know we've had a couple of requests from, I can think of one right off the bat, that Judge Page's white, Judge Page's mother, Pat Page, a big advocate for the community and has been asking about the facility, so want to make sure that her, that people like her can get in there and see what their tax dollars have been able to accommodate for us.
Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the administrator's report? I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report, motion by Councilman Sykes. Seconded by Councilman Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now we come to the public comment segment of tonight's meeting, limited to four minutes. Any resident may come up and speak and simply give their name and the street on which they live. We do not want the full address.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Ray McGusson Quant. Couple of meetings ago, I was here, and I've been watching a couple of meetings. I think it would be a great idea that if you all would watch your meetings. It's different when you're up there and you're watching us. You don't understand what's happening back here. You don't understand how the citizens feel. You don't even understand what we see. You're up there, you don't see everything. Last couple of meetings, there's been things brought up about communicating. There's been things brought up about a sign being put up within our city to communicate to us. Communication is the number-one thing here. If you don't communicate, we do not know what's happening. We hear little things, and then we don't know. We see things on Facebook that is total lies. I'm not saying about our community. So when someone up here says something, they're saying it out of your heart. Every one of you have comments. I respect your comments. I, I also would like to see you all respect everybody else's comments up here. Don't throw darts at each other. That's what I see back here. Communication is number one. A lot of my citizens have been at me. My name is Ray McGusson. I'm at 9888 Quant. They know it. They come and they talk to me. They ask me, "What's happening with city council? Is there no communication? What's the matter of putting a sign up to communicate?" Other cities have it. We don't see, we don't see nothing up here, very little. Everyone does not have the internet. Your 70-year-old people don't even know how to use it. They need to use, their grandchildren needs to show them how to use it. And it ain't even funny. Communicate, people. Communicate is, is the number-one thing. Respect each other. Respect everyone. We all have our opinions. You might not like them some days, some days you might like them, but please understand what's happening back here and what's happening out there. Just respect each other, respect us all. And I'm not sitting here trying to throw you under the bus, the table, or any place. I'm just trying to inform you, to try to communicate what some of the, a lot of the citizens are coming up to me and saying. I'm not afraid to come up here, you know that. I've been coming up here for 16 years, and I have not missed a meeting hardly ever coming up here and saying something. I'm involved. I want to know what's happening. I want to know what's happening to the library. I want to know what's happening to City Hall. I want to know what's happening to the DPW, that a lot of people didn't even know what that place is over there on Outer Drive. Because there's, there's a little bit, just a little bit of miscommunication. I want to thank every one of you for saying what you're saying during your comments. Very important, just like our citizens that come up here, it's very important for our comments. So thank you very much. You have a great day, stay safe, and enjoy your family.
All right, so, good evening. My name is Kelly Baratono, and I'm the owner of Creative Characters, so I came to you before, a little bit ago, so I just wanted to come back to talking about communication to update you on what has happened. So, based on this council's recommendation, Creative Characters families did attend the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on August 23rd, and unfortunately, we're not greeted with the same level of openness to finding a solution as we might have hoped. One parent suggested it might have been that their minds were already set from the meeting, but who knows? Ultimately, a motion was passed to allow the Parks Director to move forward with his own dance program this fall. A second motion was passed allowing Creative Characters to rent space if we wish to continue our dance program on certain days. However, I do feel that the second motion was done for the commission to save face, so that I can now say it was our choice to leave, and they would be right. Creative Characters did not- Creative Characters did not feel supported by the Parks and Recs leadership, so this makes a little less sense to me because I can only see bits and pieces of this puzzle. We know our program is valuable, and the Southgate Parks and Recreation Department agrees. They appreciate our years of experience and have been so kind to welcome all of our dance students at their ice arena. As Creative Characters was entering 15 years in Allen Park, we hoped our future would continue in this community. Sometimes the door closes because it knows you're worth more. Sometimes the door closes because it no longer leads somewhere for you. Sometimes the door closes because an open door holds so much more. It's sad that Allen Park's door has closed for us, but Creative Characters will still continue. Heck, after making it through over a year in COVID, online, on Zoom, with theater students, just moving our operations over to another city in Southgate seems so doable. I've called all the dancers who had already registered for classes for this upcoming year to explain the change in the location. All of our Allen Park families have made the decision to drive to Southgate to continue with Creative Characters. This includes new families who we have even yet to meet. So, our experience, our wonderful program, and they know our reputation. So, thank you, and I just wanted to provide you an update of where residents can find us at our new location at the Southgate Parks and Recs.
Hello, Nancy Nick, Cleveland Avenue. I also was here a couple meetings ago about Creative Characters. It's kind of sad, I was at the meeting as of several of our city council people were there too. And as Kelly had said, there was another motion made, but Creative Characters was doing a 30/70 split with them for 15 years, and then they offered them to rent the rooms. When you figure it out, which I think, Dan, you did, it comes to like an 80/20, 80% to the city, 20 to Creative Characters. It was not a feasible resolution at all in any, by any means. I would like you to maybe evaluate what's going on at the Parks and Recs. Not only have Creative Characters have now gone, okay, there are several programs that have left in the past like six years, okay? We had AAA Driving, let's see, the Driving Program. We had Zumba that has moved to another location in Allen Park. We had Jazzercise that moved to another location in Allen Park. Elements of Exercise only has one program there, if it's still going to be there. Not one gymnastics program, but two gymnastic programs have left. Belly Dancing has left. Ballroom tried to come, they left. Okay, we've lost Henry Ford Academy. Cabrini now has left this year, along with Creative Characters that held three different programs. So I went on the website to look to see what we do have, not very much, like four programs that I saw. And these all programs left before COVID, so you can't use COVID as an excuse. We also, before COVID, had four programs that didn't give any money back to the city. Creative Characters gave thousands of dollars back besides doing other things for the city, which we've all talked about. But there were four programs that were there, Tai Chi, Senior Exercise Massage, and Dr. Redmond, who used our facilities and never gave anything back to the city. So I suggest you as council need to reevaluate the programs there, or reevaluate it, and look into it and see what happens.
Well, if there's no further public comments, I will close that session, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, finance actions, and licenses and permits, one of which being an amended Cabrini High School Homecoming Parade, which has been changed to Friday, October 15. And the other is for curbside pickup permit number 022021 from Sam Rup. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins, seconded by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Let's carry. Move on to resolutions. First resolution tonight is to adopt the resolution establishing authorized signatories for Michigan Employees Retirement System, also known as MERS, contracts, naming the job positions of City Administrator and Human Resource Director as the authorized officials. Motion by Mr. Lally. Seconded by Mr. Valerius. Comments, questions? Do you like some of my explanation from? No, we all have a memo, but.
Yeah, that's right.
It was easier when you sat up here, Mark.
It was a little bit easier, but kind of, I needed the exercise, so. This is a request to name the position of City Administrator and Human Resource Director as official signatories for the MERS program. When we went back, meeting with MERS, we were going through some of the items there, where contractually, we have already agreed to a 3 and a 3, 3%/3% on a healthcare savings plan for the police officers or firefighters. They still have it listed as a 2 and a 2. As opposed to having to go through each one of those and come back before you each time to make those changes, which I kind of look, I kind of would classify more of clerical errors because it just did not get sent over to them to get updated. The contract's already been approved by Mayor and Council, but that information should be, and needs to be sent up to them. We'd be able to go back and make those changes and just go ahead and get those approved and changed so they're following the right aspect. Anything that would be sent to, for a change, would first have to be obviously approved here at Mayor and Council, and then that's what we would send as our backup to show them that it was approved. That's one of the requirements as well. And they don't name, they don't name names, they name positions.
Anyone have any questions? If not, for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next resolution is to approve the Roof Maintenance Agreement with Holbrook Roofing for nine municipal buildings for an annual cost of $6,750. We will have Mr. Kibbe explain this as he explained to us in our work session so that everyone is aware of what we're doing here and why.
Okay. This is a preventative maintenance program that we want to try to make sure we're doing here. As I said earlier, jokingly, but in essence, when you look at our past, we have not done a very good job on flat roofs. Sometimes we haven't done a good job on steeped roofs, shingled roofs either, if you look at the old church building, right? One of the problems that we have here is that we have numerous flat roofs, there's nine of them, eight municipal buildings plus the court, which is actually still an asset of the city of Allen Parks as part of the brownfield or the building authority. So we would look at the company to come in, they'll be able to review each of the roofs for $250 to go up, make sure that all the, there's no debris around any of the drains, make sure that all the drains are properly attached, anything's, everything's flowing properly. Look at any areas for defects that need to be either called out for repair or called in for a warranty. What kind of caught our eye is two-fold is, we've been reactionary here, even for the last six years, we've been reactionary, and we need to be proactive in this front so we can catch these leaks before they occur. And we get a call from, in most recent time, the library and, you know, asking, hey, I got this massive leak problem here, and we're trying to scramble afterwards to get it fixed. We'd be, try to be ahead of the curve this time around. What caught my attention was in the National Night Out, Police Officers National Night Out, Detective Thorburn had his drone up, took some pictures, we posted them to the website, we shared pictures from the police set, and I kind of caught on a brand-new roof. Here, we've been in this building, what, about three years, and there's a lot of areas that are starting to get some pooling of the puddling, you can see the dirt and debris, and we want to kind of make sure that that's not happening. So even though it is a new roof, and we do have a new roof at the DPS facility, we want to make sure that we're getting those drains cleared out so we don't have issues in the future. But we want to make sure that everything's being reviewed on a regular basis. Field 250 is a very fair number of, per building. You know, so base, he didn't base it on one side's bigger than the other because this is a much bigger building. But, you know, the work that needs to be done here will be, they can get in, clean up, make sure it's all in good shape, and move on. Holbrook's has also been the contractor, a little bit contractor for us for the last four roofs. They've done the community center, they did the fire station, they've done the court building, and they'll be doing the library soon. So I felt very comfortable with their expertise and knowledge. Greg has been a good person to work with. I've never dealt with him personally, but I know Tom has, Matt has, and Pat have all dealt with him. And I know when we were doing the fire station, Chief LaFon and Chief, Deputy Chief Can, now Chief Can, both raved that working with them was good, so I have a good feeling that this relationship will be a good one for many years to come.
I'll make the motion. I heard you, the money woman that we had, and I go along with her because I hope she doesn't say that's wrong or right, but I echo according to the money. And the money said, okay, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tony.
She did use the, something about a pound of prevention or something. We never got the, also prevention.
And also prevention is where the pound of cure.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Slack. So we have a motion by Councilman Lally, seconded by Councilman Slack. Are there any further questions? I think it's why we all carry insurance, and this is something that I think is very beneficial because things happen. You can have a hailstorm, have a friend that just had one up north at their cabin, and you got to see the hood of their truck, and you got to see the windows in their cabin.
These are for the nine flat roofs we have. You know, this does not cover the pitched roofs or the shingled roofs. We, most of us know, understand those, as we mentioned in the back. We can, we understand shingles, we can certainly see the curling and so forth, but this is the flat roof, which we can't see no, in most cases, because of the parapet walls.
This includes this.
This includes this, but yeah, let me go through and make sure everybody understands the buildings we're talking about. This will be the City Hall Police Department, this building here. This will be the community center. This will be the fire station DPS building, the old DPS building, fire station on Roosevelt, current fire station, old DPS building. The Charlie Brown Building, which is right behind the community center, next to the court, it's got the flower or the market mural on the side. Twenty-fourth District Court Building. The, let's try to run where we got, the library. The College Street Pump Station, this is on the College Street and Allen Road. It is the pump station across the street from the Thunderbolt Lanes and the Retention Basin down off of Moran, and the new DPS facility on Outer Drive.
Any further questions?
Just one comment. This is a great idea to do. As a son of a general contractor, I don't know how many times I've heard over the course of my young life, if this person just did this and that, they would have saved this, and now they're paying me. And that's putting bread on your table. I can hear it, my dad.
That reminds me of a Fram oil filter commercial, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the third resolution is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to bid the paving of the parking lot at Millward slash Rotary Park and authorize the city to accept the proposal from Al's Asphalt Paving, currently paving Park Street, not Park Avenue, adjacent to the parking lot. Resolution 21-0525-101 for $76,493 with funds for this project from account number 40100985004. May I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally, seconded by Mr. Valerius.
Yeah, Council, I appreciate you being able to accommodate this one on the agenda for us. Al's Asphalt was the low bidder through a formal bid process to do Park Street, and then we've been able to get them to give us a price based on those costs as well. So they were already a low bidder at a formal bid process. This project here is part of the capital improvements plan for this year's budget. It is in the 401 fund, and the, so it had been planned, we talked about it a couple different times, but I never saw a resolution, so I apologize. I went back to look to see if there was a resolution because Al's is going to be there to do the work here in a short bit of time, and I'm a little worried that if I waited till the next council meeting, that would already be done, and I'd be back in here either telling you, asking for a ratification vote, or watch them walk out, and that could be, have a chance to get them back until, I'm going to guess probably next year, because we've dealt with them in the past when they, their season gets tightened out because there's only so many more days there. So I'd ask if the council would approve this award. I think it'll be a nice improvement to that park. I think with Park, with Park Street getting redone to be paved, I think this is a nice addition, and we'll be able to knock one more park off the list of areas that we need to have paved that will leave us still with community, John Real, and Champaign. As I mentioned before, community and John Real, we do have pricing for, and somewhere in the range of 35, 30 to 35, $40,000 for each of those. We're just waiting to see where the money's going to come from and where we can present that to the Mayor and Council for approvals with the right timing for the funding. Champaign becomes a little bit more of a challenge just because of the stormwater retention and aspects because it is on a county road, adjacent to a county road, so.
Mark, would I be starting on this after they complete Park Street or pretty much as they're finishing?
Just as they're finishing.
No, that Park Street, I know that after the creek, there's Park right there. All that from there, all the way to the end there of Mill, Millwood Park or Rotary Park, and all the parking lots, that's where.
Not for this one here. So we've already awarded a project to Al's for Park Street. We did that back a few months ago. So that was already awarded. I don't know, I don't have the number on my, at the top of my head, I think it was.
180?
Yeah, 190 for that, and then this will be an additional 76 for the parking lot itself.
Parking lot itself?
Yeah, this will just be for the parking lot. But they are going to be doing from, I believe it's, is that Rose? From Promenade down to the entrance at.
All of that would be Asheville.
All of it would be Asheville.
Okay.
I think Tom has plans to try to get another roadway in next year, which I believe is Arnold over north here.
So I won't have to worry about going through there and go watch my truck.
Yeah, I hear you. I've got the, I'm with you, I got the similar truck, and you know, I feel like I'm Bahan back there, so.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So just to make it clear, we've gone through Al's with a number of other projects. We've bid a number of other projects, and Al's consistently come below competitors, thus the no competitive.
Right, so they were the low bid on the last project, significantly low bid on the last project, which was Park Street.
And that's part to do with the relationship that we built with them.
Yeah, we're kind of piggybacking off of that, those numbers.
Okay.
Anyone who has driven down Park Street in the last several months? I went to the Battle of the Badges, and I was very happy I was not driving by Firebird.
And this is something that, again, will ultimately save the city money because of all the compression, the maintenance that goes into the gravel.
Yeah, dust control, and I think it's good for the neighborhood, for the neighbors as well. That is a park that gets a lot of use, and I know that that becomes a complaint of the residents in that area because of the dust. So Park Street alone is going to make a big benefit to the neighborhood, but the parking lot is going to make just one, one more nice addition to that neighborhood.
Any further questions? Charles?
With this approved, will this affect any of like, because you just said it's a busy park, any like soccer games or anything like? Okay. Thank you.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And we get to my favorite section of the agenda, ordinances.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's nice to know.
We just like hearing, we like hearing your voice.
This is near and dear to your heart.
I know. I need to follow my script, like sequence correct. So we're asking for a motion to authorize the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number 062021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. Do we have any discussions or questions?
Yeah, there's too many numbers. I don't know what I need to do.
So I, I think.
Sure.
I ask for a vote. All in favor of the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. So, we have, within the city, because of the Ecorse Creek, we have a, various areas in the city, actually, we have a few creeks. So we have, various areas are designated as a flood zone. And as part of a large program nationwide, having to do with flood insurance, there is a. there is a what's called a flood map, floodplain map, and that map is periodically updated. I don't think we have volcanic activity here, but for some reason, they keep changing elevations. And so the state has has notified the city that we need to adopt an ordinance, which will adopt the amended floodplain ordinance by reference. And that's what this is today. Any questions? If not, I will read through the first reading by title only. Proposed ordinance oh six dash two zero two one, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter ten, Article two, Section ten dash thirty-four, designation of regulated flood-prone hazard areas, and readoption of a new Section ten dash thirty-four, designation of regulated flood-prone hazard areas in order to update the studies and maps referred to within the section. A second reading by title only, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter ten, Article two, Section ten dash thirty-four, designation of regulated flood-prone hazard areas, and readoption of a new Section ten dash thirty-four, designation of regulated flood-prone hazard areas in order to update the studies and maps referred to within this section.
Thank you. We move to the third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag. Second. Second by Mr. Lloyd. Can I ask for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Attorney?
Okay. Just to refresh council and our citizens, this ordinance is adopted to enable the city to negotiate the sale of a vacant lot, which is located on Russell Avenue. So I will do the third reading by title only, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter two, Administration, Article six, Finance, Division four, conveyances or leases of lands of the city to authorize the sale of vacant parcel of land located on Russell Avenue, identified as tax ID number three zero 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 four zero two zero eight five four zero zero zero.
I will now open the public hearing segment for this ordinance. If anyone in attendance would like to come up and speak to this ordinance, please do so at this time. Since no one is coming forward, we will close the public hearing segment. And we move on to the adoption of ordinance number zero four two zero two one. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Ask for a roll call vote on this.
All right, Mayor, I have a, excuse me, motion by Pro Tem Lally, supported by Councilman Lloyd, to adopt ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter two, Administration, Article six, Finance, Division four, conveyance or leases of land of the city to authorize the sale of vacant parcel of land located on Russell Avenue, identified as tax ID number three zero zero two zero five four zero zero zero. Shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Councilman Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McCloud?
Yes.
Councilman Schlag?
Yes.
Councilman Syke?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses have it. The ordinance is successful, and it will be published in a manner prescribed by law.
Thank you. Now we move on to the third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter forty-eight Utilities by adopting a new Article six, Damage by Utility Companies and Its Contractors, Section forty-eight dash six fifty-four, Duties of a Utility Company and Contractors, Section forty-eight dash six five five, specification, Section forty-eight dash six five six, Damages, and Section forty-eight dash six five seven, penalties. So this is an ordinance which addresses the situation where utility companies make improvements, or they actually make improvements to the utilities, but fail to fix the surface. Some some folks have called this the Ray McGusson ordinance, and I'll let you with the public hearing.
I need to correct that. That's Ray McGusson Quant.
Yes. Full name.
I will now open the public hearing on this ordinance.
Ray McGusson Quant? No. I want to thank you. Major, major, big improvement to our city. I want to thank everyone who has been involved. I want to thank our lawyers, every one of you. I want to thank all the citizens out there who called. I want to thank our city administrator. This is what I feel, build better. This is what this is doing. This is gonna improve us. This is gonna make our lawns look nicer. Look at Park. So I want to thank you, and I really want to thank you. This is gonna help our city. This is gonna help our neighborhood. This is gonna, from now on, moving forward, now our city knows where we are, and hopefully, other cities who do not have an ordinance like this will be able to go ahead and look at our ordinance that says, look what happened at Allen Park. So I want to thank you again. Have a great day. Enjoy your family.
If there are no other individuals who want to come up during this period of time, I will close the public hearing segment. We will move on to the adoption of ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Can we take a roll call vote on this?
Madam Mayor, I have a motion by Councilman Blevins, supported by Councilman Valerius, to adopt ordinance number five dash two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter forty-eight Utilities by adopting a new Article six, Damage by Utility Company and Its Contractors, Section forty-eight to six fifty, or dash six fifty-four, and Duties of a Utility Company and Its Contractors, Section forty-eight dash six five five, and specification, Section forty-eight dash six five six, Damages, and Section forty-eight dash six fifty-seven, penalties. Shall this ordinance pass, and we're rotating names, we'll start with Councilman Syke?
Yes.
Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McCloud?
Yes.
Councilman Schlag?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The ordinance shall be adopted and published in a manner prescribed by law.
Thank you, Mike. I think Mr. McGusson is going to celebrate tonight, and rightfully so. Thank you. And now we come to council comments, and tonight's first speaker will be Mr. Blevins.
Thank you. Great to be first. First off, thank you all for coming, and everyone that came up to speak. Again, yes, communication is everything to make a city moving forward. It's great that with this, with the parking lot and all the roads that are getting paved now, you know, the city was founded almost a hundred years ago, and we're still finally getting roads paved and all that gravel. I want to say, great job to our Allen Park Jaguars, winning so far their season and wearing football on my bow ties and blue for Lions. Maybe some of our Jaguars should go play for the Lions after the last game. Tomorrow starts Hispanic Heritage Month for next upcoming month. I do apologize to any person that came to our last week, if anyone showed up to a work session, because it was on our city website, that was canceled. And then, great job to Liz at the Historical Commission, getting grant because like anything, a dollar is a dollar, and money is money. So five thousand dollars is great for the museum. And then, I mostly just say optimistic. The city is working forward, and if you look around other communities, what they're going through, flat rock, gas leaks, flooding Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. I saw another, like, the other day where some of the road was bubbled up because of a gas leak or something like that. So it's, try to stay optimistic, try to stay positive. I'm glad that now they, company that wants to put seeds in our grass. And again, like you were saying about other cities looking into, now they say they're see the Ray McGusson ordinance. It's, he just went down my street past month, so I understand. Spent a whole month with DTE and stuff, but you gotta get the job done. And again, I hope we just keep on communicating and just stay positive. And with that, God bless, and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Councilman Lally?
First of all, I want to thank you, Ray, for taking care of that. Like you said, when you first called me, I came over. I'm going, have you seen a C D T E truck? I'm always following. I really am. You know, I'm retired, so I go all over. I just want to say, give a big thank you to the nine one one celebration, the Knights of Columbus tribute that happened last Saturday, September the eleventh. You all know what happened, September eleventh, twenty years ago. If you guys were around, I don't know, but I was. And I tell you, they did a heck of a job, the Knights of Columbus. And I want to tell you another thing, too. The chief police, Chief Egan and his honor guards, did an excellent job, including with the VFW honor guards. They had a a twenty-one gun salute, and a bugle young man that did an excellent job, too, did the taps. I want to thank them. I want to thank the American Legion. I want to thank the VFW. I want to thank the Osford participating and all that participate, all the nurses and doctors from Beaumont and Henry Ford Hospital. I want to thank all of you, and I want to thank, personally thank you, the mayor, for participating in this event. That was excellent event. And I just, I'm so happy with it. That's unbelievable. They did a nice job. And our guys, they started this. We started over a a drink of beer, talking in the steak cookout, and said, what are we gonna do? We gotta do something with nine eleven. Then me and him says, well, we celebrate nine eleven. Do a tribute to the people that have passed away and all the people that have been going on with the COVID, the nurses, the doctors, you know, everybody involved. So that was very nice. I want to thank every one of them. I really don't have much to say, but I like the idea that your proposal went through, Ray, I really do. Did a good job there, Joe. Good job. All you guys did a good job. Thank you. And God bless you, and I'll see you sometimes in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Dan?
So I just, I think it's really encouraging to see this ordinance go through because, as a teacher, teacher of of history, I think that this is precisely how government's supposed to work. You you have a citizen that sees a problem within their community, whether it be their city, their county, their state, their country. They speak to their elected officials. They make it known that there's a problem, and government seeks to craft a solution to that. And and that's that's how it's supposed to work. And I'm very appreciative of that. On another note, I think that there has been, I saw Mrs. Veritone come up today, and it was kind of with a mix of of bittersweet. I'm very happy to hear that creative characters will be continuing, and that many of our our residents will be able to continue to to flourish from that program and to gain the wonderful life skills that the performing arts can provide young people, which are numerous outside of just dance or drama, but the confidence to get up in front of people, the the ability to speak with with power and purpose in front of a crowd of people. Those are things that that go on to make people not just lifelong enjoyers of the performing arts, which is amazing in itself and rewarding itself, but good members of of society in our community. And I'm very, and I'm very happy to hear that you you will be continuing that and have that opportunity. I am deeply saddened that that we will be losing it for our community. I do, I do find, when I got up at the meet the candidate night at the Allen Park Performing Arts Center, one of the things that I emphasized in that speech was, is that I think that one of the things that makes this community great is is that, is the ties and connections that our citizens have together. And those ties and connections are made through the variety of programs that we offer our citizens. I have friends to this day that I made at Cunningham Park, that I made at our various baseball diamonds, just in our parks in general, just playing, and that's how you build those bonds and relationships. And those are the people that sit up with my wed, at my wedding with me. Those are the people that I I still, I still socialize with, and that gives us, this makes us more than a city. And and I am, I am very sad that we have one less thing that our citizens are able to enjoy. And I I promise our citizens that I'm going to look into how it is that we can make sure that we are maintaining these relationships so that we can give as many opportunities for our citizens as possible to build those relationships and strengthen this community and to continue to make Allen Park the amazing place it has been to to live and to work. And and that, and I will work tirelessly towards that cause. Thank you.
Pamela?
So I finally get to say something about creative characters. And one of the things that I would like to say is that without having participated in their program myself, I probably would not have spoken as well as I did at the city council or meet the candidate night. And I've been very blessed to be participate in the theater, in the cooking classes. And it's just, I feel so saddened by the loss of a fifteen-year of a 15-year program. And it's a program that not only is a theater program, but it also teaches you how to participate in a group activity, how you participate in the next class thing that goes on that where you're working together with other people just like you do on a football team, just like you do on a baseball team. These activities that the creative characters produce, these is just valuable to our citizens. And I hate to, hated, hated to see that this program left. And I'm glad that she's been able to find another place to be. And I wish her all the best, her program. And I'm sorry I missed the 9/11, Tony. And thank you very much. And that's all I have to say. I yield my time.
Thank you. Matthew?
I'd like to welcome again Officer Ryan Allen to Allen Park Police Department. And also thank Deputy Chief O'Reilly for the updates on the Fire Cadet Program. We were kind of talking a little bit about it. I think that college credits and stuff like that is really going to help build that program and add to the number of 16 that are currently involved. And hopefully it does. So Ray, you know, you come up here and you talk and you give us credit. But really, the only reason we have credit is because of what you did. I mean, you know, we have a legal affairs department, review things and talk about things. And yeah, we voted to pass the ordinance. But unless a citizen come to us and took the time to do the things that Ray does consistently, that's how things get started. That's how things get rolling. So I appreciate that for sure. I apologized to Tony earlier in our work session. I'll apologize again. This past Saturday, 9/11, I didn't attend the memorial event. I wish I was able to. But I was on the Jordan Valley Pathway up north on a hiking trail, 21-mile hike in a fundraising effort for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. 30 hikers raised about $85,000 to grant wishes to children with debilitating illnesses. And this is something that I've done now for the last five years. So this was also the first in-person event that Make-A-Wish Michigan has done in two years due to the pandemic. So it was kind of extra special to be able to be actually out on a trail. Last year, we did it virtually all spread out and did three loops through Mayberry State Park. But this year, it was actually nice to actually be in an in-person event with the volunteers for Make-A-Wish Foundation and everything else. So that was, that was, the hike took place on 9/11. I made it a point before I started, when I got up at 3:45 in the morning to get things rolling, I set my phone alarm. And I set my phone alarm for four different times. I set it for 8:46, 9:03, 9:37, and 10:03. And at each of those alarms, I stopped on the trail and I knelt down and I said a prayer. Those were the four times of the planes crashes into both towers, the Pentagon, and into the field in Pennsylvania. My thoughts and prayers continued that entire hike, all 21 miles of it. And I thought about, as the pain in my legs and knees just continued to get worse and worse, the only way I got through that pain was to think about all those first responders, the police officers, firefighters, all the doctors, nurses, military personnel, veterans. So that is what inspired me, as well as the fundraising efforts, like I said, to grant wishes to those children with debilitating illnesses who need that wish in their lives. So I appreciate all the hard work and effort that Tony put in, and the VFW and all the other organizations involved. And I also just wanted to say that after 20 years, we must never forget. And with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Gary?
I'll be quick. Class is always the funnest. I definitely want to say to citizens I came up here today, thank you for continuing inspiring me. And to my colleagues that I sit up here, who inspired me with everything that you said and everything that happened. And I can't without further ado say thank you to the Knights of Columbus for the event that happened. And all the participants, especially the honor guard, did a fantastic job by honoring those people that passed and those brave folks that were there on that day and for the weeks and months that passed, after many that passed from cancers for sucking in the chemicals that came in their lawns for the recovery efforts. Don't forget that effort. And I want to remind everyone that as we never want another 9/11, I hope and pray every day that we can have more days like 9/12 when we as a nation came together. We need to remember that, especially as we look out and just turn on our TV and see another attack from the left or the right or the center. It's getting ridiculous. And we need to come together. And that starts at the city level. And we have to continue making sure that spreads through our community so we can go to the state, to the city, and on. And with that, I will yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi?
Thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Mike. As we get closer to an election, we'll hear more from Mike. We've had a number of celebrations and observations in September. Of course, we started with Labor Day. So only remembered 9/11. And I'm sure we all have many memories of that, you know, mentioning the, not only the people who perished on that date, but as Gary mentioned, the ones who have passed in the years ensuing who were exposed to chemicals and toxins. And we think about all the first responders who went there. And I personally knew an individual that I worked with at GM who went. And I don't know how many weeks he spent at Ground Zero. I do know that he died much too young from something that he probably shouldn't have. But that was him. And that's why we loved him. The Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement for the Jewish faith, is being observed this year on Thursday. It is one of their holiest days and one that they share as far as how they observe it with many other religions. And so it was indicated, this is the Hispanic Heritage Month. The governor did declare that. Interestingly enough, the Library of Congress deems the month to be from September 15th to October 15th. And we are fortunate to live in an area where we have access to a large Hispanic community. And we need to avail ourselves of the opportunity to take a visit to Mexican Town, take a look at some of their museums. We've got a display at the Detroit Institute of Arts, the Diego Rivera mural, which is famous around the world. I think we need to go back and revisit some of those and appreciate what we have within our community. On Friday, September 17th, we observe Constitution Day. And I'm rather surprised that the gentleman who sits to my left didn't mention that.
Before my last.
But, yes. And it's also Citizenship Day. And it's the day that is set aside to commemorate the signing of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787. And it's also a time to recognize all who have become citizens. And kind of in line with what Mr. Schlack said, it's a time to think about the rights and responsibilities of citizenship and what it means to be a U.S. citizen. Unfortunately, September is also a month that is laden with a long list of cancer awareness, including cancers of childhood cancer, leukemia, ovarian and prostate. We encourage everyone to take care of themselves, get your chug-ups, stay healthy. We end the month with the Fall Equinox on September 22nd, a day which brings us a season dear to Councilman Valerius's heart, closer and closer, but one for which most of us can wait, but not Matthew. And that would be winter. We appreciate all of you being here tonight. We appreciate the presentations and all the hard work that our departments and staff do. We appreciate the feedback that we get from our residents. We may not be able to give you everything you want, but we try our very best to do what we can with what we have available to us. So for that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Seconded by Mr. Valerius. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:23 PM. Have a good and safe week.